I think he's done. Cody, are you on?
Yeah, I see him there. Um, and I just.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. President Larson.
Present.
Uh, trustee Eiko Kraut. Trustee Kazmar.
Here.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Ziegler.
Here.
Trustee Zerbas.
Here.
Have a quorum.
Was the meeting posted?
It was posted as required by law.
Next is public participation. So, public participation allows citizens to be heard on any agenda and non-agenda item. The public may also comment during the public participation section of each item. The village board shall make no decisions or consideration of action of citizen comments for items not on the agenda except to refer the matter to the village administrator for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for board consideration at a later date. And as usual, please try to keep comments to three minutes and state your name, address. Connie?
Connie Airfer. My questions again. How much did the depot go for? And why did the yard get it over the community, uh, community people? And my comment about Cody, I can't comment because I can't get a hold of Cody. I found out he's in training and on vacation. Went to the police station and asked them where he was, so I can't say anything about that till I find him. So those are my questions. Do I get an answer?
We haven't, like, come to an agreement yet. We're still in negotiation, so we might have some of that information later tonight, but after post-session, but I don't know.
Judy Vacha, since I haven't talked for the last three meetings, I might go over my two minutes. First question is, is I have not met our police chief. I don't even know his name.
Chris Hughes.
Chris Hughes. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Second thing has to do with consent and they got two questions there. One is there was a check written to Paine and Doyle for North Line Street, which I assume was, uh, halfway of matching it for twenty-six hundred bucks. So why didn't we do it like Tom Connor has talked to us about with milling it and then peeling it? Because North Line is about, the whole street needs to be, be done. And I know you said, well, you were going to do something with the entrance to the park, so therefore it wasn't going to get done. Some Paine Doyle and cashed it for six thousand two hundred bucks. Second one is, is why did we write two checks for retirement? Nine days apart. Once on twelve-nine and once on twelve-twenty-six, which comes to about thirty, over thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, and you're talking about WRS, because that would have been the WRS.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's two separate payments for WRS.
Can't just write one, you gotta write two.
Do it monthly. I'm guessing the one-on-one-six was for, or, I'm sorry, on twelve-six was for?
Twelve-nine.
The twelve-nine was for November, and the one later on in the month was December.
Okay. Wasn't sure, and I'm going through, never seen two online here.
Yeah, and sometimes when you got a payroll at the very beginning or very end of a month.
Okay. My next one has to do with the board payroll. I was trying to figure out why you're paying all the trustees five-hundred and then the X's on the other side. Is it something new?
No. So there's been an ordinance for longer than I've been here, so, uh, trustees get five-hundred dollars quarterly, plus twenty-five dollars per meeting attended, uh, and then I forget exactly what the president gets, but they're.
The brand.
Yeah, and then they can get twenty-two dollars per meeting too, which Jeff has waived that during his.
Yeah, I know, but. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Next question I have is, can flex time be carried over from one year to the next?
I mean, there's. Not really thinking.
So if you have flex time, you have to take it in the year, which it.
Flex time is when the week of it, it's being earned.
Excuse me, do that again.
Flex time is a weekly thing, not a.
You don't accumulate it to the year?
Nope.
The next one is, I thought this was really interesting. I heard today that New Glarus received a four-million-dollar grant to build their new library. And prior to that, they got a couple of million to upgrade their water sewer plant to take care of their phosphorus problem. I've got two grants in about two months. Why are we not pursuing grants like they are? They aren't gonna get an increase in water and sewer, and they aren't paying a forty-year loan, much less the water quality trading fee ask for that we've had. And I know Mark's wife writes grants. He sits on public boards.
Poliga.
His name's, he marked his wife up on Grant Street.
Yeah, Mark Poliga.
Okay, so that's the right guy. His wife writes grants. So, you know, we do have people here that have skill sets. We should use them, which brings me to the parks that everybody, the mothers want. After the cookie bug, I found out we have a group of, an organization of five hundred mothers in the Belleville area. That's a big group, but that doesn't count grandparents who also take care of their grandchildren. Out of the five hundred mothers, we should be able to find or recruit these individuals who probably know more about parks and designing a park and what kind of equipment for the park based on age than doing a study. Just asking.
What was the question?
I know we use people in the community that we have.
People in the community, we expanded committees to include people in the community. People need to, to volunteer to do that.
I don't think we're gonna go to them, are we?
Not general, I mean, I'm happy to talk to people, but I don't, I mean, like, it's not like we don't have open meetings for every committee that we have.
We're terrible communicators.
Everything's posted.
I can take that criticism, but I don't know, like, this isn't a full-time job for any of the trustees, so.
I grant, gather that.
Good.
But when I am looking for something and can't find it.
The door is open twenty, like, forty, thirty-eight hours a week, and I know that Ian and Gabe and Maren have, have said, anytime you wanna come in to ask questions, you're welcome to come in.
I've been here, and I've asked questions, and half the time I get. I don't have time to find it. I've done open records requests, and I get ignored. So you know, Jeff. Yeah. I've gotten down my ground.
Any other public comments? You had a question before I go on? Yeah, of course, go for it.
Okay, in that consent agenda, the check register you brought up about the ETF, why do we have a late fee of sixty-five ninety-four on twelve-twenty-three, the ETF?
Because there was a payment not made on time.
Was that the November payment that sent the E payments?
I don't remember exactly which one it was.
And why were we late?
I am remembering the right one. It got sent to an old email, and we didn't receive it, and Tierney reached out to them and, uh, and then got it corrected, so they're now sending it to the AP.
So maybe we have our.
Yeah, so there was just some miscommunication. We, Tierney spends a lot of time trying to make sure those, uh.
Voices get paid in the.
I mean, we were late, and you gotta accept the consequences of unfortunate circumstances.
The government, that's how they operate.
Good.
Any other comments in public participation? Okay, next, we'll go to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda, and this includes village board meeting minutes from December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the December twenty-twenty-four check register, and the twenty-twenty-four quarter for board payroll.
We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Question by Gary, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion at all?
I neglected to write one of the dates on the line, and I talked with Ian, and I'm just gonna do it next month. It'll go on mine, so it won't, I won't get paid for it till three months down the road, but that's okay with me and hope it's okay with all the board members. Dave?
Yes, it's part of your.
November fourteenth.
Part of your, got it. It's a part of your payroll. It's, it's not on there, though, but it doesn't impact this specific payroll item. This doesn't impact this specific payroll item. It would be the next cycle.
Right. Yeah, it will.
We're just gonna carry it forward to the next cycle.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? President's report, I don't have anything. Staff reports, Gabe?
I don't have anything either.
Ian?
Aaron? Um, just that dog tags are now available, thirty dollars per neutered and spayed, thirty-five for, um, trouble ones, the untouched ones. That came out wrong, sorry. Also, the, um, due date for trustee paperwork, if anybody out there has it, is tomorrow at five PM. The due date for village president paperwork is Friday at five PM.
Yeah, Jim, Chris, anything?
Oh, just to introduce myself. My name is Chris Hughes. I'm the new interim police chief, so, uh, sorry, ma'am, I forgot your name, but if you are here towards the end of the meeting, or if we get a break, touch base with me, we can set up a time to chit-chat.
Okay, so.
Alrighty, so, if you don't, if you wanna see my bio, kinda, sorta, go to our Facebook page for the Village Belleville Police Department. So, there's a little snippet there.
I'll give you kudos. I saw you shoveling. And you're the first chief I have seen since I've been in town who has gotten up and shoveled.
Well, thank you.
Kudos to you.
Video about you, you and Nibblerus working together.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on Big Radio, yep. So, thank you.
Hey, Connie?
So, Jim, I just wanna comment how nice the park is looking. I saw you guys down there chopping all those scrawny little trees down, bushes, whatever. It looks really nice.
Oh.
It's getting there. I know the wonderful leaves or weeds, flowers, whatever they're supposed to be, F's day, I guess. It's looking better.
Thank you, but why?
Okay, next on the agenda, discussing, consider next steps regarding the Steven Fisher Trust.
All right, so Rick and I met with, um, the attorneys from, um, getting F. Godfrey as well, as well as the trustee of the trust, so we got it, uh, from the source itself. Um, it is, they don't want to limit or, you know, not approve something that the village would like to do, so what we had discussed is, we come up with a list, um, kind of a report, strategic plan, if you'd say, about what our projects are, what our goals are, what our financial strategy is, what investment is, like, do we care about investing ten percent each year, or just the interest, or whatever we want to do, whatever projects we would like to do, we'll send it to them, they'll sign off.
Yeah.
We are good to go. Um, the flexibility is really up to us on what we want to do. We talked about a beach, we talked about water quality, we talked about trout, like, we talked about everything, and nothing really jumped off the page as bad to them, what they would like just to express to, once we know what we wanna do in the next couple of months, send them a report saying, these are the projects, anything that you're like, no, you don't want us to do, and then, um, they're in the, kind of in the mindset that they'd like to get over with, at least approved on what projects we're doing, so we can get the remaining money back from them. So, really the flexibility is.
Right, it, basically, they, they said that, in their minds, the village had discretion, I guess, to best determine what it meant for improving, maintaining, uh, supporting the Lake Bellevue and, um, Sugar River, so they did not wanna be in a position of saying, this is how you have to spend the money. They more or less just wanted to say, I think their main goal is just to close this out, so, but they would, like Gabe said, what we would like to do is just come up with projects that we can send to them. I, I think there's, based on the conversation, quite a bit of flexibility. Um, no, not to the extremes, right, but anything that we can, uh, somehow relate back to the lake or the river. Uh, they, they seem to be okay with that, so we did talk about like a beach, right, and like establishing a, a beach for people to use the lake, and they didn't have any issues with that, and they said, like, for instance, if you wanted to take some money, like, a quarter of the money or half the money, and set it aside and say, for the next forty years, we're gonna use this to maintain the improvements that we've made, they said that would be fine in their eyes, too, just as long as there's a plan for the money, they can make the final disbursement, because there's about thirty thousand that's still waiting to be dispersed to the village. So, once they feel comfortable that there's a plan for the money, they'll make that final disbursement, and then the trust will be closed.
You said thirty thousand, son?
They are with, so right now, the trustee is holding back thirty thousand?
It was forty thousand before.
He said thirty thousand today.
Well, that was forty, I know.
Probably incurred costs back and forth, back and forth with us.
So, there's, yeah, thirty thousand set aside.
So, this, uh, sending of the, of the list to them, I'm assuming, is this a one-time thing, or?
They would like to be done with it.
So, a one-time list, and they approve it or not, they get to close the trust then, and, uh, any other monies then are for, that, that still remain after, after, say, that whole project list was done, are for the village to decide what to do with regarding lake and the river.
So, they want it in a list form, or do they want it in like a plan of sorts, I'm assuming?
I, I think it would be good to provide them some detail about what the project is and how it relates back to.
I think anything, any activity that we do, I think we'd have to do that, but would it be beneficial to, to your point, Mike, instead of, again, I'm envisioning something that would, I don't wanna say mimic the trust, but mimic some of the language that would not handcuff the village, but it would provide future boards' guides to say, because I'm assuming we're not, I'm not advocating for spending all the money on one thing. I would assume that we're talking about using it incrementally or using it over time, um, and with that in mind, that we could come up with a plan that would outline that, that would provide some examples, um, for what the intent would be, but, but some more guidance, and sort of using those pillars as, as guidance relative to that.
Yes, I think that, that would be appropriate. It, it didn't sound like they said, like, spend it all within, like, the next six months or something like that, right? They just want, I know that there's a plan, how it's gonna be spent.
And I assume that this review of this list, whenever they get it, will also incur a fee, so whatever is in that residual amount is changed.
Should go down a little bit, too. Yeah. Judy?
Um, since the money is meant for the village to support, which improves its maintenance, would it not be fair to allow them to voice things they'd like to see in that money?
Sure, that's why it's on the agenda, and we're having an open meeting tonight.
Correct, but it's not that clear what we're gonna be doing there.
It's how you consider next steps.
Or explain the people you're involved with.
Yep.
Well, Kim, I mean, we can all use it for so many things, but, yeah.
Exactly. I don't know how many times through here I've read that it is to be used for, and in black letters, Lake Bellevue and the Sugar River, support, maintain, improve. That's what it says. Many, many times. So, I'm not understanding why these things change. This has been, I brought this up, I don't know how many years ago, twenty, what was it, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, whenever we got the money, and nobody listened to me, and now it's in here, umpteen times, that is to be used for Lake Bellevue and the Sugar River.
Connie, no one's arguing with you. It's the, what the, what the trustee of the money, person who's overseeing it on that end.
On the bad end, yes, I know.
Says it is the board's discretion on what that means.
Right.
And then, yep, that is what they said, is the board can determine how we wanna spend it within those.
Why is it in here? It doesn't say that.
That's, doesn't have to.
In his own will? He's trained it.
So.
Oh, jeez.
It is their, well, if the trustees.
Attorney that drafted it.
Pardon?
Attorney that drafted it, trustee, on the call today with them, that's how they were telling, that's how they were describing to us.
Was, it's the, but they're also, they're getting a final say. The board is gonna make.
I know, I told you that, too, and you told me, you can do whatever you want.
We'll see.
That's why I didn't hear that they get to see how you're spending.
And that's what we just.
I'm glad you see that now. Today I sat for a long time. Where do we go? I was thinking of ideas, and I wanna bring them to you. Why this bugs me so much? Anyways, um, I was thinking, a boat pier would be nice down there for boats to, to get in and out of there, people to get in and out of their boats. I would like to see us finally, after three years of Steve's personally being dead, and his people, his family trying to give you money, um. If they can't pay for the whole thing, I'd like to see some of this money go for that. A beach would be wonderful. We've been waiting years for a beach. Where it's gonna go, I, I am, I'm not a beach person, so I don't know, but a beach would be absolutely wonderful. I was told restocking the fish is not a good idea because of all the carp, and that we would never get it all out if we had a carperee, but it still would be nice to get some of them out of there. The green algae, it would be nice to get somebody that knows how to keep it out of here so they can swim always, so it's gone. Um, clear out the stumps, they should have been cleared out. Those are not fish hiding places. I was told today by a person that is a lake person, a fish person, that the fish hide in the, the tree branches, the hanging stuff, tree trunks, no. The stumps, no, they should have been taken out of there. Somebody had their boat out there, and they're going along, and, and a pregnant woman almost fell out of the boat as they hit a stump. They're not even marked out there, which years ago, they used to be marked when they, uh, whatever. Maybe it would be nice to have somebody, we all sit together, which we've already done, but, um, plan to use, Judy, as you said, ideas for using the money, and a summary, a summarizer, to summarize it, how we should spend the money, but it shouldn't be, you can't, I don't know what you were trying to say, if you're trying to say how to use it in the park, down in the water, this should, yes, because that's, it can't go anyplace else. That's not where he lived. Um, this one, I don't know. This one didn't hit me real good, that somebody brought up that RVs, no place for RVs to go, and they said it would be nice to be down in the park, but I can't see a bunch of RVs down that park. They said, we're not allowed camp there anyways. But some down, somewhere down in your.
An RV would cover this anyway.
What do you call it?
An RV would not.
No, I know, but.
Have anything to do with the.
Keep that in your mind when you do your, see it's your big thing. But those are some of the ideas today. I had help thinking these up as we talked for hours, trying to figure some things out for this. I just. It's the old man for Steven Fisher.
Talking about Ashley, um, she talks about a beach. It's a great idea. I am such a beachgoer, and so is everybody else. Problem is, is with the carp, I don't know what DNR would say with that. Um, I've literally walked across the lake. There's no vegetation. There's no way to keep the bacteria under, under the right circumstances to keep it healthy enough for it to be healthy. You gotta think they're swallowing it, you know, um, it's, rashes, things like that. Too small.
I know previous, at previous meeting, we talked about having DNR come in and shock the carp, and I know they do that on occasion. I've seen them doing that. And a carperee every year, it's rid of some.
Some.
And there are people, even spearfishing type things.
And you get somebody down there that doesn't like the fish killed that way. That's what happened the last years ago when they had it.
Oh, it's all over, everything.
Also left of on the burn.
But the other thing is, is there are people who will take them for their garden. There are people who will pick them up for their garden, because they make great bird lives. But I do agree with Connie, we need to stop that lake. There are people who like to come here to fish, and there's lots of them there.
So, Connie, the one thing that I will say is, we are doing our best to follow his trust, which is also why we had the conversation with the trustee and with the attorney, and the board is, when the board makes a recommendation to them, the trustee and the attorney are signing off on it. So, if it doesn't follow Steven Fisher's will, like, what his intent was, you have to blame the trustee and the attorney, because they're ultimately gonna be the ones signing off on it, and they're the ones who have the ultimate say. So, I guess you can feel confident, once it gets a final approval, that that does follow his intent, because that's how he said. So, that brings you any comment?
Judy? Another comment, the discussion you had with the attorney and the trustee today would have been nice if it was in some sort of memo or letter form from them, so there is never any question for future boards, you know, in the future.
I don't know that it differed that much from the previous communication received from, assuming it's probably pretty soon.
And, and once we send, like, the, the board's list, we'll get confirmation from that, that.
These departments work.
It's a letter, something that we can just keep.
Conversation I had was totally different.
So, this list, uh, when we get together to create it, uh, is it going to be like a brainstorming list of things we might want to use the money for, and not necessarily have to be projects? You know, I'm thinking, you know, if you wanna improve water quality, you know, there's, and to address, you know, some of the comments that were made, you know, shocking the lake and getting the carp out is one, uh, you know, possibly additional dredging or something that might be needed to get water depth and things where they need to be, uh, you know, I'm just, there, there could be so many different ways that certainly would exhaust the money, uh, if we chose to try to do them, uh, and some of it's going to be timing, and, and how you execute, and what ultimately we decide direction we wanna go. I mean, if we wanna improve the water quality to the extent of, uh, you know, being able to maintain, uh, game fish and, uh, you know, a swimming area, that could take years. So, I guess, did they mention, like, what kind of list they're looking for that way?
No, they, they really wanted it to be a village-driven process, and, and really, they, what they viewed their role as is like, just not objecting to anything that the village wants. Like, they will let us know if they object to something, otherwise, it's, you know, you create some plans for how you wanna spend the money. I would say. I would say. To have a plan for how all the money will be used for, not that it's like actively spent on specific projects, but you know. You could say we're going to use for maintenance of something, right?
Yep.
So. I don't think it has to be a, this is what our exact plan is for the money, or these are all the projects that we're looking at evaluating. We're planning on putting money to. Some of these or maybe not all of them, but these are the projects that we're committed to pursuing.
Yeah, because there could, there should be ongoing maintenance on some of these things. A beach is, that's just going to get put in one year and then be fine forever, you know, so that, and if we. You know, whether we restock the fish and do we do that on a regular basis, or if we sane the carp or whatever, I don't know the technical term, but, uh, so.
I'm glad it took months, but I'm, I'm happy we've, you know, gotten to a point where. You know, the, the trustee's been contacted, the attorney, you know. I'm, I'm at a point where I'm, I'm happy that, uh, any ambiguity is cleared up. On, you know, the legal side of things. So.
So what is the? The ask for tonight is just to figure out what our plan is to basically accomplish these things?
So yeah, now that you know kind of what they've thought about it. You guys need to decide what you want to do. Like, do you want to set a goal that we're going to have a plan set up by April first of twenty-five or? Like, what do you guys want to see? What is success in this like to you guys?
It's kind of our ask.
I did see, as I read through this stuff over the weekend again, that. It's mentioned something about doing this as quickly as possible, even in there, you know, so we had the money for a while. So yeah, I think the sooner we could get it done. The better, so.
The other thought is, you, we're now in that conversation, the board's going to be coming. Do you want to do that under your board? Before a new board comes in, that way you guys have been the ones that have been battling this fight.
Yes.
Uh, so that's something else to keep in mind for timelines. Um. I would put investment strategies in that. We already have the investment strategy now, but if we're going to put, let's just say forty thousand away for a beach maintenance, what the investment strategy for that looks like? What is the decision-making process going to look like for future projects? If we decide we don't want to do everything right now? What does that decision process look like later? So that way they know. How a decision is going to be made so that they can trust it. And so those are the thoughts that. If you put an ad hoc committee together, that's going to decide these projects that comes to the board, or is that a parks committee? I think these are the conversations to start mulling over. Uh.
Like. Think in my mind at least, and not, we're not going to solve all this tonight, obviously, but in my mind. I think the board needs to consider what our primary goals are for these funds. Um. Water quality seems like primary on most everybody's list. I think it's in the trust, it's in most of the documents, so some, some aspect of. And that's not to say a one-time. Shot at that to Mike's point, and I think Gary, you were talking about it as well. I, I love ideas of beaches and a whole bunch of other stuff, but I, I'm. I'm appreh- well, again, this is enough money that we could literally leave it alone and draw on the interest and use those funds on an ongoing basis. To maintain water quality. I don't know if that's feasible, and I don't know how we would necessarily draft that up. That's probably what I'd initially advocate for. But I also can understand, like, there could be instances where we might get ahead of the game. If five years, ten years down the road and have. You know, Ian, what is this pulling off? Eighty thousand dollars a year, sixty to eighty probably? In interest that we might have another sixty to eighty on any given year that we could either put back in the bequeathment or back in the, in the. In the fund or utilize for. Partial payment of installing a beach or something like that. I would, I, I, I'm not a big advocate personally for blowing it all at once and saying. Oh, we're going to get the, the lake into perfect condition and then all of a sudden. You know, years later, but I also think about things like Upper Sugar River Watershed. And, you know, could there be possibilities that we could help? Not only clean the water, but also help educate the next generation to. To. Um. To be good stewards of their environment, right? Could, could we partner with the school district? And, and, and do some of the things that they do that, that would help with water quality training, or not trading, but water quality relative to that. Um, and I think that to me would go a long way, but that's just, I mean. That's kind of where I land on a lot of stuff, but I think if, I think a plan like that, I think we could actually draft up instead of having a. Grocery list of different things that we could do. I think it'd be helpful to say, yeah, like, hey, if we got to a point like. Maybe second, third, or fourth on the list might be things like pulling out the stumps or putting a beach in or putting in a boat landing or a. A boat ramp or, or something like that, but to me. And it's not that I'm against those things, I just. I'd hate to have the water be in the condition that it's in now. We put in all these wonderful things to get into the, the river or otherwise. And we still have the same issues, right? Good, so.
Simple solution for you, Jeff. There was a lake advisory committee, it was suspended. And that's exactly what the lake advisory committee did. It's very easy to create that committee again.
So, uh. I'm assuming possibly that committee or at some point. You know, when the lake was dredged. Possibly or at some point in the past, there was a water study done for the lake. I'd like to see a copy of that to review it. It's probably so old and things may have changed some that we're. Probably need to have the DNR involved or some entity that knows about. How to. Go about improving the water quality and involved. So that's probably a first step. Uh.
Like, the DNR has that, there is wat- water quali- quality reports done monthly. Up until the, the big flood that destroyed that lake.
Okay.
Which I think are all good things and that.
We, we need to understand.
Absolutely do that. I'm, I'm, I still kind of get at the, the, from the, the conversation about the bequeathment itself is. What are our goals as a, what are we trying to accomplish, right? Which I agree with all of those. That's, that's more in like how we strategically are going to get there, but what are the big picture items that we're trying to accomplish with these funds? That are within the bounds of the trust, but also that we can document to the attorney and to the trustee to say. Here's what our plans are so that they can say, oh yeah, that sounds completely reasonable, and then we can go from there. But Connie, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I got a few, a couple. Okay. The water, we were dredged and we dried for a year. We didn't get, it was awful. And then it was all good and they put decent fish in and the flood came and now we're all mud and junk again. So. Whenever the flood was.
Eighteen.
Um, yeah, two years that it flooded. No, one year was one everything.
Year was way high, I remember.
Ways over. Day. Um, we need to do something. Something has to be seen. We have, I've been saying this, we have to see it. Elbow needs to see something done. Just, just something.
We have to have a plan first to get it approved before we can do anything. I don't disagree with you, but that, I'm not going to go out there and just cut a check and say, look what we did. And then go to them and say, no, you can't do that.
Stumps, do something so they can see it's done. Just something. I mean, now it's three, there's stumps in there. Three. Years now, we've been waiting for birch snakes. Fishing here, just.
What does it have to do with the bequeathment, Connie?
I'm just saying do something, because I don't know if they have enough money for it, maybe that can be used to help it. I wanted to bring up. Um. New board. Now, when I brought this up. You guys, you, you said. We're a new board, we can do what we want. We don't have to go by what the other board said. Now, so then the new board comes in in April, they can change this. Is that what you're saying?
Not if it's approved by the trustee.
Not if we've, yeah, not if we've come up.
It's got to be approved, any changes would have to be.
By that trustee.
By, yeah, the, yeah, that's the problem. It's by the California trustee, so.
Well, I'm just asking because you've made the comment that.
Well, there was no plan and there's still been, but there's been no plan, which is why we're trying to get to that.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying.
That was the.
You're going to.
Well, that was the context of my answer.
Okay, no more. And I just want to make a comment. About Kurt. He's the one that wanted this to happen and a whole balloon went on and it never happened and now it happened. So. I just think that was kind of bad for Kurt. Because he brought up that.
Because I asked how he was going to pay for it and he never answered the question.
I did for you. I told you there was forty thousand dollars.
That wasn't answered at that meeting.
Yes, it was.
No, it absolutely wasn't.
It was, I said it.
The wife's parents aren't here to, uh, be involved yet.
Hey.
So.
All right.
So from a next step standpoint, um, do we need to have?
Nothing else to be decided tonight.
Nothing else, but, but would it make sense for us to have another agenda item to discuss this or, um?
I would.
I mean, I'm, I'm envisioning kind of almost like a two-tiered thing of, of goals, like an overall goals list. Of what we're trying to do with it and then almost like a random projects list of.
Yeah, and we can set it up in two different meetings and kind of.
Either two different meetings or just sort of, I mean, like we did that with the, we did that with. Like parks stuff like last year before. Like to some degree, but.
Not to rush or sow anything down with you guys, but. We are doing the master plan process for a community park. And once that plan is done, like that's what the park's going to look like.
Right.
So I would at least. Get the thought what a beach would look like and where, because if that. Design gets put in place and we start putting things in, like, it's almost too late to put a beach in at that point because that's what the parks will look like in the future. So I would at least start heavily considering that because that'll be done probably what, July, June, July, I think is what we said. So. You have until that point to say beach, yes, beach. Now, if we can put in a design and we don't have to do it right away. But if we don't put in the design and we put other things in there, then later we say we have a beach. So.
Well, I think in terms of random projects that we could do or use, utilize these funds for, I think a beach will probably end up on the list. I don't think that's an issue. In my, in my mind, it's still not a top five item even.
No, I agree. I think it's just my point is.
That to me, the water, water improvement, getting that, getting invasive species and doing all of that sort of stuff relative to the lake and the river are going to. They're going to eat up. Annually about as much as that. Fund can produce, at least initially. But that's. That's not to say that we don't get a beach. I think we could probably do a part of a master plan and do it.
But that way, but ten years, it doesn't have to be right away, just leave it open.
Do we work on this goals list and projects list? As a special committee? And bring it to the board? I mean, would that be the better way to do it, or, or are you thinking just do it right here with the board? On an agenda item?
Same to the board.
We're just trying to get in.
Our parks.
We only help.
Yeah, I think. We just do it with the board is kind of where I land, just because. We're going to, we're a bit, in a bit of a bit of a time crunch, I think, but I, like.
Okay, do we make that an agenda item then for?
That's what I think from the next, yeah, agreed. I'm just, yeah, I'm just, just trying to.
Sitting here right now, I'm not going to come up.
No, I understand. No, I'm not saying that, but I, I'm saying like the, the, the stages is kind of what I want outlined to Gabe so that. When we put it on the agenda that we at least have the tools or sort of an idea of tools that we can utilize to basically do that.
Because I mean, some of these ideas are going to require a little further research and, you know. We had a separate firm and there are reports that, that several of them, you know, when we decided to dredge and everything, so. Um, again, the data in there might be old, but the, some of the ideas might still be, uh, good ideas, but, uh, um. No.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have amounts for stuff necessarily. I mean, it's.
No, I mean, like I said, they were. Since I got it was they view this as a village-led process.
Right.
So. I don't think we need to put up specific dollar amounts to these projects, I'm just saying. This is what we're doing. Like, if you're setting money aside to be invested, I think it'd be good to have an amount.
You're missing ten percent of the interest every year or whatever.
But otherwise. It's. I think they're going to be more of a take it hands off.
Sure.
And, and let the village sort of lead the process.
I would like to say that I would like to see the pier put in. Rightfully this year. Was it last year? Uh. Over where the old swimming pool was. Pier was put in so that where people backed up, put their boats in, they put a pier there, right in the middle. And it should have been more to the side so that you can put your boat in. And then use the pier. To get into your boat and.
It's a canoe dock.
That's the one, that's the kayak, the boat dock, yes. That's why it needs a boat. I'm sorry, saying that, that's why we need a boat dock. Well, they, it was there and they, the pier was put in the wrong place. So anybody that wanted to use, go up the river, uh, really had no place to put their boat in. And I'm surprised that the village didn't get a lot of golf, especially from the duck hunters. Because.
What does this have to do with the bequeathment?
Well. If it, it, I was told that it costs a lot of money that they couldn't.
Installing the kayak launch and taking the kayak launch and where it goes has zero to do with.
No, but the, but the, I was told that why isn't the pier put back where it's supposed to be? And I was told it costs too much money. I'm not going to do it. And that is wrong. So we can use.
So we're talking about the pier that's in the lake?
Well, it was put in wrong last time.
On the lakeside or the river? You're talking the riverside, right?
Riverside, yes.
So what pier is sitting over, what pier was there? There's not a pier.
Well, they put a kayak, I believe, a kayak launch over there.
You're talking about the kayak?
That got washed out in the flood.
And they, um, yeah, because you see, if you go.
But the kayak launch isn't the pier. The kayak launch.
There was a pier.
There was a pier there.
About, but it's not here anymore. That flooded out week.
Right, so we don't have it anymore.
So we should buy one, put it in because that's a lot residents use it. Follow what I'm saying now?
I, yeah, do follow.
Thank you.
Okay, do you need any more direction beyond that?
I think that sort of makes sense.
Hope I'm good.
Okay.
New business, discuss and consider MSA's general engineering service agreements.
So Kevin is on the call, if you have any questions for him. But this is a, pretty much the boilerplate. We do this every year for, um, engineering services. So, uh. I don't, I don't have anything really other prepared besides, this is, the fee schedule is below, this is what we do every year, um. Then in the fall, we do a consultant annual report. Um, kind of a check-in with each of them, so. Um, Kevin, is there anything you need to add to this?
Sorry, my picture, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. No, I don't have anything that necessarily to add. I think, uh, like I said, these are just for services as needed, so if the village doesn't request anything. Um, then nothing is done, but, uh, this is what we use when sites, uh, come in that we need to review for the village or. Anything, uh, Gabe requests or anything like that, but it's basically, uh, on-call services as needed, so.
I'll make a motion that we enter into the professional services agreement with MSA for the Village of Bellevue, twenty twenty-five. General engineer.
Second.
Okay, so that's motion by Gary and I'm going to give the second to Shelley. Um. Kevin, are there any, um? Because I don't have the, I don't have the rates for last year. Is there any significant changes that should jump out the page at, at us? From, that were changes from last year?
I would say the biggest change is just my rate. Uh, my rate went up to one seventy. It had been one sixty for about the last, I can't remember if it was three or four years. We've kept it constant, so I'm hoping to obviously keep it constant again. Um, for some years. Um. Otherwise, um, some of the, uh, rate ranges go up. I mean, I love the, kind of the standard little bits. We get obviously yearly. Adjustments and things like that. I can't tell you exact numbers or anything, but they're. Um, very typical of what I guess anything goes up or whatever.
Sure. But there's nothing that was like something doubled or went up by twenty or thirty percent?
No.
Any further discussion? So motion by Gary, second by Shelley to approve the. Professional services agreement for MSA for what, December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you all.
Next, discussing consider ordinance twenty twenty-five. Next, discuss and consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one, amending residential building and yard requirements.
Okay, um, so I, I wrote this kind of in response to what market, we're seeing with market trends, uh, in housing and then also the developments that are being brought to us. Basically making, and this has gone through planning commission. Uh, making the lot size smaller than this six, what was it, six thousand?
Yeah, six thousand.
Um, and making minor changes to, uh, the setbacks to correspond, uh, and then lot widths to correspond. Um, but to try to combat, uh, the increase in housing prices, go down to a smaller lot. Maybe overall costs to actually build the home is, is less, which can lessen the price of the home for sale. Not necessarily the size.
Yeah. So this is a recommendation from planning commission. This did go to planning commission first. And I think this mimics the HUD that we approved, um, new development on the west side to basically was before we were able to do this. So that's what sort of prompted this because I suspect there's going to be future developments in line.
You would be. Comparable community.
Yeah.
Like, uh, if you look at Wanakee, Verona, uh, Middleton, um, a lot, a lot of the suburbs of Madison are actually, they've got zoning districts that allow for even smaller lots without having to do a PUD. Um, so don't want to do any too drastic, but give this a shot. They still obviously have the option to subdivide the larger parts of this.
Ian, what would the lot size be approximately?
Six thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, lots?
Thousand square feet.
Six thousand square feet. What are the average lots now?
Uh, well, the smallest is seventy-three fifty is the smallest we have now. So it's thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, so. And then it takes the minimum lot width from seventy feet to fifty feet.
Three hundred feet?
It's awful small.
I'm sorry.
What you're seeing is the houses on these lots are still the same size, but the yard space is smaller. A lot of people, um, prefer smaller yard, less maintenance. They're not gardening necessarily anymore. So that's what, since that's what's trending, that's why a lot of communities should go in this direction.
I was just wondering why the planning commission is deciding to shrink the lots and considering there's already an ordinance on the books and zoning for zero lot line to begin with.
Zero lot line would be a condo, which would require a restrictive, restrictive covenants and require like an association with any more than one unit. Um, if you're going to have a zero lot line, you're going to have at least duplex. Uh, and so it's not require any restrictive covenant.
That's multifamily. So the zero lot line doesn't qualify for, for your single family?
It, it does, but it's considered a condo. And like I said, there's restrictive covenants go along with that. Basically an agreement between the owners of that, um, building, whether it be two units or twenty units, uh, that they're going to, to pitch in and pay basically, you know, condo fees or HOA fees or something like that, where this is would be individually owned and, and completely on their own, just like any other city.
All right, is zoning committee going to be changing, uh, a lot, the, the lot ordinance for a single family also?
Well, there are several districts that allow for single family. This is the one that already, this would be changing the, the minimums for the one that already exists and is the smallest lot or represents the smallest lots. Um, but there are two other single family districts that allow for larger lots.
And just so everyone realizes, to visualize this, what they're, what they're proposing with this is exactly, exactly the cookie cutter crap you see up in Pittsburgh along County Highway MM.
It'll be.
What size lots is? Petrie. Thank you. Um, those little houses he's putting up there, what's, one of those lots?
With, with the new one, the new development, the new development that's going to be west.
I think so, because he was making his lots very small.
The same size as this.
So he already gets to make his.
We did it as a PUD that allowed that to happen. And this is to change the ordinances so that others could basically do the same thing.
So how many houses are you going to get on an acre now?
Twenty-three thousand five sixty divided by six.
Seven.
Seven houses on an acre?
Wow, it's not an exact, because there's other things I could.
Six.
So the, the neighborhoods that are directly south in, uh, Green County currently, I forget, Green, up, up Park and
Green.
Greenview, um, those are all the seventy-three fifty. So it'd be slightly smaller than most lots.
It'll be two-story shotgun Louisiana style, just like, like I said, over in Pittsburgh in their new section on MM. There'll be zero, zero, zero grass. It's just going to be a.
What I'd like to point out is I've mentioned a lot of these meetings and it sounds like now, I'm trying to understand as well, that when the company developer brings in their idea, we can say yes or no to one of four different zonings throughout their building process. So we're not getting only that. It sort of comes with the territory of.
That is what you're going to be getting with the slot size. When you, when you, when you take in the animal, minimum square footage of a building, that is exactly what you're going to be getting.
Certain areas, yes.
They don't need to buy it.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it's, it's the minimum lot width minimum, it would be six, fifty feet. So that would be a fifty by essentially one, well, it'd be like one fifteen, which would be, because it would be long and narrow. Um, or it could be, say sixty, sixty by a hundred feet. Um, the front yard min- minimum is twenty feet, the rear yard minimum is twenty feet and side yards have to be at least five. So houses will be at least ten feet apart. Um, with this anyway, I'm not necessarily advocating that somebody goes out and buys one of these, but like, I think the, the ultimate question goes to, there's constantly comments about having affordable housing and and this is the only way to get there.
They're not affordable anyways.
Relative to everything else in the market, they are, Connie.
Who of us can report? Maybe you guys can, but what happens to us old people? They're not affordable.
They're being bought up, Connie.
That's the, I don't know, what, what do you? What, what is the solution that you're proposing?
I don't know. Why don't we have somebody build housing for older people? Affordable.
A lumber company, I guess, and get cheaper lumber and, you know, all the other supplies that go into it.
Of course.
And it's.
Yeah, I don't think we can dictate.
No, we can't.
No, you can't, but it's, it's just frustrating.
And it's Petrie's goal is based on our development discussions that his houses are about three to four is his, his goals for price. In the new lot in group, uh, Green County. That's what he shared with us.
Yeah, that's fine. I wouldn't buy one.
You don't have to.
And, you know, our, our housing preference personally doesn't necessarily mean that this is not someone else's preference. So. We can't just make a decision based on there.
Connie, I wouldn't buy one. That, that's me. But the developer does and people buy them all the time.
Yeah, they're very small.
Well, you just said, dude, you don't want to garden anymore. There's a lot of work.
Yeah, exactly.
Go smaller.
And if you're, you're, if we're catering to Epic, which we're not, but we can because we're that close to it. That's what they want.
Yeah, they don't want to do any of that.
I spend three hours mowing my lawn. They don't have that time. Right. I haven't. So.
Do you want to decide? Three hours, Gabe. You live in like three acres?
Yeah.
No, I have a push until about this summer.
I guess you're going to take me twenty minutes.
No.
You aren't, you aren't even on a, you're not even on an acre.
He takes breaks. I mean, come on.
I was on a half acre and I'm with a pushmore in Ohio. It took me like an hour and a half and I banged it.
My motion be approved ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
Exactly.
Okay, so got a motion by Gary and seconded by Deb. Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, that passes six to one. Next, discuss and consider update to section two point seven of the personnel manual.
So this is really just a CYA and the manual that was attached to the agenda last time had this change in it. But there was a draft that wasn't, so I'm just covering all bases here. Um, and the reason for that is in the old personnel, it said that public works employees would get fifteen dollars a day for being the on-call person. That was what it was written in paper. In actuality, which was brought to my attention, is thirty dollars. Uh, when that change was made, I don't know.
Several years ago.
But it was made, so that's the actuality for it. So this change just reflects what is actually happening, which is thirty dollars a day for this, that way, current practice and policy match.
So it's basically for the one person that's on call on the weekends, they get thirty dollars instead of fifty.
For carrying the phone.
And being, and responding and actually work, because they work on, it's not whether they're called them, but they actually come in and do stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, check water and that sort of stuff. So they're sort of required to be here. So.
I'll make a motion that we update section two point seven to thirty dollars.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Just one question. Is that for or?
It's just a stipend for the weekend. So.
They get thirty dollars for one day. If they have to come in and actually work, they get paid more than.
Well, they come in and work the weekend, right? So there's somebody on call, but if you're on call, you get thirty dollars because you're working the weekend.
Got it.
And then you get your hourly rate for.
Okay, got it.
I don't know that they work, do they work a full eight-hour shift on, it's just two hours. So it's.
Thirty dollars more or less for carrying the pager.
Right.
And then when they, they could come in in the morning every day and I don't know if they come in the afternoon, get paid for that separately, but, uh, it's thirty bucks for carrying the pager.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That carries seven to zero.
So on that note, uh, the hall will be closed until nine o'clock tomorrow. I'm going to put out a post this evening. But we're having an all-staff meeting at eight o'clock tomorrow at the library to go over the personnel.
So.
Over what? The personnel manual.
The personnel, the new roll out of stuff. Okay, reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anything from library board, Deb?
Nope.
Gary, public works, properties and utilities?
No, not that we.
Economic development. We just had, uh, Wisconsin Economic Development Committee come in or, um, economic development representative come in and let us know that they've got a bunch of resources that we can utilize, which is nice, but tap into some of them. Mike, arts and culture?
We had a debrief, uh, Marion Bright and the Cookie Walk, which were both very successful events and we really appreciated that, you know, there were a couple of community members that took it upon themselves to, uh, you know, head up the event. The mural project, uh, there's a fundraiser coming up, uh, at the library. Should be posted soon, if not already. And we should get draft, uh, uh, example of what the mural could be, uh, by April, I believe.
Month.
Connie?
I thought we had the money for the murals.
We do. There's, there's, uh, it's, it's a thousand dollars we're trying to raise for ongoing maintenance.
Oh.
Any news and announcements?
I guess interviewing the new director of public works. We had twelve candidates, uh, apply. I narrowed it down to four. I'm interviewing tomorrow. I interviewed one today, went very well. Interviewing three more tomorrow. Um, hopefully the next week will be with Jeff, uh, Gary and I with the, uh, department heads and then hopefully at the twentieth, we can, I can make a recommendation for.
Uh, that's a reminder that the next board meeting wants to be on the twenty-first on Tuesday because of Martin Luther King Day on the twentieth. So don't come here Tuesday. We won't be here.
Don't come here Monday.
Monday. You come here Tuesday. I'm not sure where I'll be ever at this point. So I give up.
The upcoming community events? Feature agenda items. I know we're going to talk about the bequeathment plan next one, but I'm sure we could.
And one other item that I have is the twenty twenty-four annual report. Um, I've got a report from all the departments, um, some just numbers and graphs and all that kind of stuff. I will have that for you.
Okay, next is closed session. The Village of Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed section. This is related to establishing a negotiating position regarding a village depot property and discussing negotiate, negotiation position with Jeff Preach regarding the Badger Trails development.
I want to see it tomorrow.
I have a motion.
I'm, so make the motion second. Go in a closed second.
Maxine made the motion to go in a closed session, seconded by Deb. You have to do a roll call for this.
Uh, trustee David.
Yes.
Trustee Euchelkraut.
Yes.
Trustee Kazma.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Yes.
Trustee Ziegler.
Yes.
Trustee Zervis.
Yes.
Assistant Larson.
Yes.
It's like seven oh eight P M.